James for the Cave Award. So congratulations. Reach over and say congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, our second recipient is actually going to be very famous tomorrow because we are unearthing a time capsule at Henry James. It was buried 25 years ago. And Sadie Ferguson is the spokesperson for the HJNN. She's our news anchor. And she is going to be doing a live, a live unearthing of our time capsule. We have no idea what's in it, so I could date myself. It could be like a Geraldo Rivera moment. But let's hope not. Let's hope there's some really interesting stuff in there. But so here's what the orange team had to say about Sadie. Come on Sadie. Here's what the orange team had to say about Sadie. Sadie is a student who is known for her resilience, compassion, dedication, and diplomacy. Sadie's not just an active member of multiple clubs and organizations, but an obvious leader. In our HJNN, Sadie has embraced opportunities to learn multiple roles and skills, even when faced with obstacles, she never backs down. Instead, she finds creative solutions and encourages those around her to do the same. She was named editor of the school yearbook due to her conscientious efforts to take the lead in organizing and paying attention to details. She's also involved in our school musical, film club, and numerous activities outside of school. In class, she is kind, empathetic, and encouraging of her peers, even in even the smallest actions. She welcomes all people and willingly interacts with and helps students of all levels and abilities. With a smile and a positive attitude, Sadie can be dependent upon to help her classmates share when something is wrong and be consistent to meet deadlines to fill her commitments. She's a role model and one who contributes to our communities on a daily basis and is therefore a deserving nominee for this award. Congratulations.
Sadie.
Step over here as well. So we have two honorees for our Cave Awards. I don't know, they're both very busy, so they might not actually be here. So I'll do a quick share for them. But when we take a look at the Cave Student Leadership Awards, it really does look for students who are taking that leadership challenge. Their willingness to take on new things and also to make difficult decisions, their ability to work with others, to commit to a project, and both of our students really exemplify this. So I wanted to say congratulations tonight to Morgan Liu. She's actually on the lacrosse field right now, playing in CCC game for their conference. So Morgan is a dedicated athlete. She is a varsity field hockey player. She's also a varsity girls lacrosse player. She's an all-state player, so not just at the, at the level in, in field hockey, but also in girls lacrosse as well. She's an AP scholar. She's also been elected treasurer of the student council. And then she's also the award winner for the COLT Award for Excellence in Foreign Language. She's also a certified referee. She's on the spirit club for our Trojan Wall and also the environmental club. So somebody who really takes on lots of different opportunities. Her recent volunteering at Hartford Hospital has also led her to want to become a nurse, and she will be attending Northeastern next year. So congratulations to Morgan Liu. So she's our. And our next recipient is Nana Poku Boachi. Nana is a member of our ABC family here at Simsbury High School. He also is a member of lots of different organizations. The Students of Color Alliance, he's the president. DECA, if you don't know, that's a business club. He is the member and also vice president. Equity Council, the Congressional Art Competition winner in 2023. So if you're not aware, he is an incredible photographer, and his artwork was actually displayed at the Cannon Hall at the U.S. Capitol. So not surprising, he's our head photographer for the yearbook, National Business Honors Society, Varsity Track, that's actually where he is today, varsity basketball team member, and he's also part of the Amies Angels Youth Volunteer Group, which helped to obtain medical equipment for those in need. So another super dedicated leader and really want to congratulate Nana on this awesome award as well.
All right, next we have our athletic director, Jeff Penny, here to talk about the Scholar-Athlete Award.
Good evening, everybody. So every year, every school in Connecticut who's a part of the CIAC recognizes one outstanding male and one outstanding female student athlete. And really, the focus is simply on academics. We look at GPA, we talk to their teachers, and then we look at athletic accomplishments. So we are able to have one of the two here tonight because the other is playing in the girls' lacrosse game. They're winning five to one right now, by the way. Cooper Thomas, Cooper, go ahead, stand up so everybody can stare at you while I read this. Cooper has a 4.1 GPA this year. He's a four-year varsity swimmer, three times all-conference, team captain, all-academic all four years, also a four-year soccer player, and ran track for one season for us as well. And when we make these selections and we seek input from coaches and from teachers, it's always very exciting to hear, oh, you picked the right one. Because really, as we narrow it down, people feel a sense of relief, and that's an excellent person to represent this award in the school. And that's what Cooper's teachers and coaches said about him. That's an excellent choice. He's an excellent person, an excellent human being. He works hard at everything he does, and he's going to achieve a lot of things in his life. So congratulations, Cooper. Our female student athlete this year is Charlotte Reitz. She's on the lacrosse field right now. She's actually committed to play at UNH next year. She has a 4.5 GPA, four-time cross-country athlete, four times all-academic. She was a team captain for that team. She was part of the basketball state championship team last year. Not only played extremely well in the game if you were at the game defensively, sang the national anthem before the game. And then she was part of the varsity girls' lacrosse team that were runners-up in that game last year as well, also sang the national anthem before that game. She's an unbelievable person. She does amazing things. She's a very high achiever and just quietly goes about her business. If you walk down the halls at Simsbury High School, you're not going to know who she is. But when you walk out on the field or you hear the name and you put it all together, you go, that's another outstanding student athlete. That's a great recognition for her. And her coaches and her teachers said the same about her. That's the perfect choice for this class. So congratulations to Charlotte Reitz.
Congratulations to everybody on those. What I have here is a gift for our student representative, Macy Getz. Macy has been a valuable contributor.
Macy has been a great student rep. This is not a check-the-box exercise at all. These kids take this role extremely seriously and really is not afraid to dive in and give us their opinion about what they think about the issues that we wrestle with, right? And Macy brings a voice of the students, as she should, right? Like, you may not have noticed, but we, it's been a few years since we've been in high school, right? So we're a student, so we value, we greatly value what Macy brings to the table. So just wanted to say thank you. We know you're off to do bigger and better things, and we were just ecstatic and thankful for everything you've done for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all our students that came out tonight. Thank you very much.
We're ready to.
We are ready.
With that, we are on to public.
Give them a second.
Yeah, just let them, just give them a second.
They're clearing out.
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice work, everyone.
You have better resumes than me.
Oh, you do have that right.
I'm 59 years old, but I have better resumes than you.
Exactly. Only going to wonder.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Patty.
I feel terrible, you know, sharing this after all this nice accolades and everything, but I have to. And I just want you to think of it as a positive thing, not a negative thing. My name is Patty Gonzalez. I have address confidentiality protection from the government, so I don't give out my address. But last week, I had a meeting with the high school principal, my son's counselor and a teacher. And after that meeting, you know, everything was fine, came home. This week, my son goes to school, and something that was said at that meeting got out. I don't know how, maybe it was a coincidence, but my son was getting teased and bullied today. And he has thick skin, so it really doesn't bother me. So I'm doing this not just for my son, but for other kids. I just want to say that school administrators and teachers, sometimes they spread rumors or gossip about children and families, and it hurts students, not the parents. So maybe you're doing it openly, and other kids hear it, and that's how it gets around. But school districts are required to obey state and federal laws when a student's privacy is concerned, including the Simsbury Policy 5127, student record policy. My son has had issues at the high school, but like I said, he has thick skin. He's a good kid. He's really, he's a pacifist. He's a big kid, he's tall, but he doesn't care what he, but it bothers me because he's my son, and I have to protect him, you know? And I know it bothers him, but he doesn't let it get to him. And lately, because of the rumors and gossip that possibly came in from administrators and teachers unknowingly, they talk and other kids hear it possibly, you know, it affects my son. So please remind Simsbury High School administrators and teachers to stop spreading rumors or gossiping about families openly because it violates state and federal laws and school policies. Although I know gossip and rumors will never end, I want to remind the Board of Education that it is school administrators and teachers who are at fault sometimes for inciting, causing bullying and harassment of students in violation of the law by openly having conversations. You know, kids are teenagers, they're smart. They hear stuff, and then they naturally tease. I never blame kids for anything. It's the adults who I blame. We have to be, if you want to gossip, that's fine, I can't stop you, but do it privately, not where other kids can hear a child's name, a conversation that took place. I just want to remind you of that. And like I said, my son has thick skin, and he doesn't really care, but it bothers me because I'm his mother, and I'm supposed to protect him. And deep down inside, it does bother him, but because why else would he tell me, you know? So just remember to please keep the conversations private. I can't stop you from talking, but don't do it where other kids can hear, and then they go back, and you create like a bullying situation for a child. You don't realize it, but it happens, and I just want to remind you of that, okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Yeah, go ahead. State your name, address, any of three minutes.
You know, when I was a kid, I always thought it would be fun to be in this chair for these meetings, and now I'm not so sure. And I apologize for being late. If you can believe it, I went to the wrong conference room, so. But thank you so much for the opportunity. If I can just have a couple of minutes of your time. I'm Philip Gillette. My family and I have lived at The Ridge at Talcott Mountain Apartment Community for about three years. I have twin children attending Central Elementary School. I'm going to read from this prepared statement because it helps me organize my thoughts and just express my concerns clearly. So while Latimer Lane School was under renovation, children that were living at The Ridge at Talcott Mountain have been attending Central Elementary School. Recently, we were informed that starting with the 2026-2027 school year, these children would no longer be permitted to continue at Central Elementary School and would be rezoned to Latimer Lane School. Notably, only children living at The Ridge at Talcott Mountain have been affected by this change, to my knowledge, you know? Which further strengthens the feeling that, you know, we're being treated differently maybe than other neighborhoods. I'm disappointed by how this rezoning process has been handled. I took a look at the Board of Education meeting minutes for this year. I didn't really see discussion of the topic or consideration of its impact on families like mine, but admittedly, I may have overlooked that, so if I did, I apologize for that. There's been, I feel like, a lack of transparency throughout the process, and families that live in our community, I don't really feel like I've had a meaningful opportunity to provide input before some of these key decisions have begun to take shape. I also can't help but feel that, you know, part of the reason our voices aren't being heard is because we live in an apartment community, and it feels like maybe we're being treated a little differently, like maybe our concerns don't carry the same weight as concerns from some other neighborhoods. My wife and I, we contribute to this town in meaningful ways. We love this community. Our kids love this community. We are deeply about Simsbury. My wife, for example, coaches youth soccer here. So we're not just residents, we're actively involved, and we just feel maybe like we've been shut out of the process a bit. And I want to stress finally that changing schools is really disruptive for young children, especially now when we take into consideration or context the instability of the COVID years and our kids having to sort of rebuild, you know? A lot of our children are still rebuilding that sense of consistency and belonging in school. I just hate to see that interrupted, you know, by another upheaval. I mean, these early years in elementary school, they really matter a lot, and the decisions that happen at this level can have implications for many years to come. So I guess I'm asking maybe to consider slowing the process down a little bit, creating some space for real community input so that families like ours, you know, from every part of town deserve to be part of the conversation, because these choices, they can affect our children in real and lasting ways. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else, public audience? Then we will move on to committee and BOE communications. Macy.
Okay, so as the year's wrapping up, the high school has lots of different events for specifically the seniors. We had the outing today, breakfast tomorrow, we have the underclass awards tomorrow as well, prom, and then senior awards night is June 3rd. And then we will be getting ready for final exams that start on the 4th, and graduation, grad walks, et cetera, end-of-year activities. Similar things at the high school to an extent. There's also eighth grade graduation, end-of-year choral concerts, and then there's also the President's Educational Awards and Promotion Ceremony coming up in June. I think that's the 4th and the 10th. And then the elementary schools are also wrapping up with their assemblies and their musical performances as well.
So Communications Committee, we met back on the 16th. Just hit on a few of those items. So the strategic plan communication, there'll be a monthly letter going out from Matt, as it always does. He'll call attention to that and provide a link. We'll have a QR code in the communicator that gets mailed out. More to come on that in a second. We went over the website location, that'll live on the Board of Ed page, and it's also under the curriculum page. And then we discussed a little bit about the webpage, just as far as kind of calling attention to it, where it could be prominent, and kind of what to label it as, the strategic plan instead of five-year goals. So strategic plan, we want to make sure everyone's aware of that and it's out there. So that's the communication plan for that. Speaking of the spring communicator, the winter communicator got some positive feedback. The spring communicator will be going out soon. I just wanted to thank Ingrid Koloski, Katie, and Neil for all the work they did in bringing that back this year, right? As we know, it was something that was well-received in the past with kind of just everything that's gone on with staff reductions and different things. We didn't have it for a little while, brought it back this year, and I think it's a great way to get involved with the community. People are getting something in their mailbox, tells them what's going on at the schools, the education system. So thank you to them for that. Some things you'll see in that this time, another letter to the community with Matt and Jeff in there, some student voice things. I know people like seeing what the kids have to say. The central principal announcement will be in there, strategic plan, student achievements, and some stuff on the seniors for Simsbury High School. So that's just a few of the things. I think, you know, it's going to be pretty jam-packed in those four pages. And then we hit on the vision of the graduate, those promotional video series. So video number five will be coming out soon on innovation. It's going to focus on the arts continuum. Again, Dave Prinsteins running all that, and focus on risk-taking, failure, perseverance, and flexibility. And then we'll get the final two videos by end of calendar year to wrap up all the VOGs having their own video. So more to come on that after the summer. And then we also agreed that we keep the same cadence of meetings for Communications Committee, so we'll meet October, January, and May. Seem to work well this year. So I think it's a successful year for that committee, and thank you to Katie and Neil for all the partnership on that. So appreciate it.
Thanks. Jess.
Nothing to report, just congratulations to all the award winners.
Liu.
Good. Well, first, I'd like to just commend the Capstone program. I had the opportunity to attend the third West Thursday, three Capstone presentations, and I attended one regarding culinary, and another one was about equine genetics in biotechnology. I know I'm not going to get that right, but it was fascinating. And then another one, I attended, one of the students, and these were students that I knew, so I was very happy to attend. And another one was regarding Alzheimer's and dementia and in some of the research work that the students had done. So again, they were three different ones across the board. I could have spent all day observing these students and watching, you know, how they have progressed and what they've done over the course of the year. And it really is fascinating. I kind of need to go back and have a refresher on some of these because they were so good and just top of their game with this. So I can only imagine what they're going to be accomplishing, and probably you're one of them, you know, in the four years that they continue on. So with that, not as exciting as Capstone, but as Macy had mentioned, the end of the school year, it is the end of the legislative session in the next few weeks. So we just have about two weeks to go, and the legislators you've been reading passed a sweeping education bill. It was sort of a catch-all with everything in it, and these could really bring some changes, massive changes to Connecticut education. So the General Assembly merged disparate education issues into one unanimous bill, which is the catch-all bill, and among other things. So it extends a deadline for addressing racial imbalances in schools, which some districts have had some issues with over the years, temporarily tweaks the age to begin kindergarten. So as of September 1st, 2027, there'll be no waivers included, and all students at the age of five by September 1st, 2027 will be entering kindergarten. Also setting standards for school crisis drills and encourages students to study civics. And the last is restricting cell phones in schools. So our district has done a number of these areas and policies, and so, but it is just overall that will be affecting the state of Connecticut and some of the districts. So with that being said, you know, we have a couple more weeks to go. Who knows what's going to happen when it's all final, said, and done? And most likely, they will be coming back for a special session sometime in September since they will not be concluding totally in June. And with that being said, we have, for my Board of Ed colleagues, we have the end-of-year wrap-up, legislative wrap-up. Neil and I usually attend in tandem over there. So it's what's happening in your district and what are implications for education in your district? So we'll be talking about education funding, special ed, of course, teacher certification, education mandates at disconnected youth, and of course, my favorite, all the legal updates. So you are welcome to attend. It is Tuesday, June 10th at 9:00 at the LOB Room in Hartford, and it's very well-attended, so we'll be covering a lot of information.
Thank you.
I wanted to just tell you that I was in Pennsylvania this weekend for a graduation, and I couldn't help myself. Not that there's a direct correlation, but of all the kids from Connecticut, all the Simsbury High kids graduated summa cum laude from college. So that's something to say about Simsbury and Simsbury Schools. That was very cool.
That was very cool.
Did I beat that?
No, can't beat it. But Communications Committee was great. We really just did a good full recap. It was a really, I think it's a great group, and I think getting our word out to the people is the best thing we can do. And if anyone in the public who watches this wants to participate or ask us questions, please reach out to us because we're happy to make sure we're reaching you any way we can with what's going on here. We had a Personnel Negotiations Committee. Neil will be talking about that down the road, but it's busy at the end of the year.
It is busy. Lot of stuff.
We're all set right now.
Excellent.
We're all set right now.
And so am I, Mr. Chris. All right. Keep it moving, people, right? All right, this is, I'm going to take this next one.
I will take this next one. All right. Ms. Vanessa, I'm going to ask you to stand up for a minute and embarrass you a little bit. I am, I'm really excited, actually thrilled to recommend to the Board of Education this evening that Vanessa Messiah, there you go, be appointed the next principal at Central School. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the process and then a little bit about Vanessa. So this is actually when we sat down to screen the applicants for this process, we had about 50 qualified applicants, you know, a job of great interest and a really, really strong pool. So what we do with that is we review those applications at the central office level, meaning myself, Sue, and Neil, and we hold initial screening interviews. So we interviewed 14 people initially that came through to select who we would then move forward to two rounds of a more of a larger, kind of robust committee that included administrators, teachers, parent representatives. Two rounds there, very thorough, and I have to say, in every instance, Vanessa won the room. I mean, for those that have been involved in the process, and several of you were, she lights up the room. She really connects with people on a personal level in a way that's outstanding, and I just want to commend her for that. So when I think about Vanessa, she's been at Simsbury High School now for four years. Four years has made remarkable connections with our student population, and just in terms of her communication with both the staff and the parent community, it's really been exemplar. When Vanessa is handed something to finish, kind of start to finish, it's buttoned up. You don't have to worry about it, and that's just a great skill that she has. We're now going to transition these secondary skills to the elementary level, and I know that that came up throughout the interview process, much like it did when Maggie went from the elementary level to the secondary level. And we talked administratively about, we understand the importance of having experience at a certain level, but we look for leadership skills that can transfer across different areas and different opportunities. And I think Vanessa did a wonderful job of taking that head-on in the interview process and making people feel comfortable. I wish you were involved in the debrief sessions that Mr. Sullivan runs.
Me too.
To hear what people had to say, you know? Very complimentary. So I'm certainly excited to work for, look forward to working for, you know, in this new capacity and really supporting you and your success as we move forward. The whole team of elementary principals are here to support, and I know you have your family team, which will have you introduced in a second, but I want to, I want to make this official and move this, move this motion to the floor.
Yeah. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, the Board of Education motion, Vanessa Messiah is the position of principal for Central School with the effective date of July 1st, 2025.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Great. You have 8,000 seconds.
I will second.
Any discussion?
I think it was a great pool, it was a great process, and I think Vanessa will do a fabulous job, and I think that school is a very special place, and I'm looking forward to you understanding how special it is.
Amen, absolutely.
I just want to add, Vanessa, too, it is not easy. There's many people in this room who have done it to have a position internally already and decide that you're going to take the risk to take that next step because nothing's guaranteed. So you did a wonderful job with that, and I'm happy that you kind of took on that challenge and went all in. So congratulations. And you have to introduce your crew.
I will.
I thought we did vote on it.
We didn't, we nominated.
Sorry about that. Let her make it official.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. Now, congratulations.
First of all, thank you. Thank you to all of the board, everyone who was involved in the interview process, everyone who championed me in the school district. I really appreciate all of the support that you all have given me. My number one champions over here, my family, just want to say thank you for pushing me hard and supporting me. So I will introduce, this is my baby, this is Aria, she'll be two in August. Right here is my husband, Jamal Messiah, my father, John McKelvey, my mother, Ada McKelvey, and my sister, Marissa McKelvey.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
My principal. Thank you, Becky.
Great. This is great.
Thank you.
Go celebrate.
Yes, we're going to celebrate. Dinner.
She is. All right, next up for us is the approval of the May 13 minutes. Can I get a motion to move those along?
I will move that they get approved.
I will second.
Excellent. This is where the magic happens. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? Great, thank you. Next up, personnel.
Yeah, two items for tonight. One is a resignation. Lale Golafshani is an art teacher up in Squadron Line. She holds a pretty part-time position with us. It's about a third of a teaching position. We hired her last summer. Was a good first opportunity to get her foot in the door. She has found full-time employment with another local district, so she is resigning this part-time position and will search for somebody else again this summer.
Need a motion, or need a, somebody to move that, please?
I still moved. Except the resignation of Leila Golafshani, effective June 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So that's obviously one year with a guaranteed return to employment in August of 2026.
Anybody move that motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education approve the guaranteed non-salary child-rearing leave of absence for Jacqueline Duran in accordance with policy 4260.4, effective August 25th, 2025, through June 30th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
Just nail on something like that. What do we do for kind of like backfilling for just like a year, right? Pretty important thing, right? So do you just let the one psychologist try and handle a double caseload?
No, that would be too much in that school. So you're either finding someone new to the profession, you know, sometimes if you're not able to find somebody like that, we might turn to a retiree in a situation like that, have them work at a part-time basis sometimes. So they can be tricky depending on the certification area, but we, and we always have to wait for the birth of the baby, too, so it really just happened. So this was one that was hard to get out in front of, right? So we'll see where we go, but Meg Evans and I will analyze the pool as it develops in the summer.
Thank you.
Any bills? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Neil, I see.
Yep, I'm still, I'm at a roll tonight. So as Tara pointed out, our negotiations committee met last week to talk about a couple, this settlement and then one other item that's going to come up next. This was recent bargaining with our custodial and maintenance group, which consists of just short of about 40 members across the district. NAGE is its acronym, National Association of Government Employees. I want to thank my partner to my left, Sue Lumke, who helped negotiate this contract with me.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
And we reached a three-year agreement, which is a pretty typical duration when you go to do a contract. So you can see the summary that we provided here. In the first year, very consistent with our other bargaining groups, this group is going to receive a 2.8% general wage increase for next year. And then in the two years of the contract following that, we settled at a 2.95 and a 2.95. In terms of the other most important issue when you go to negotiate contracts, of course, with healthcare costs, this was the last group, the board members, especially those on Personnel and Negotiations, know that we've made a big move toward a medical management program through Cigna that controls costs, that is about pre-certification of major processes and procedures. This group, because of the cycle, was the last group that did not have that. So as part of the negotiation, now all of our employee groups have the same exact plan design, and that feels good for the first time in three years. As a result, we kept their share of the premium cost in the first year the same and then went up half a point each in the, so by the end of this contract, they'll end up with a 20.5% share of the premium cost. We've also been, our dental benefit was behind the times a little bit, and all of our groups are now receiving a $2,000 maximum benefit annually. We did, as one incentive, this group had had some perfect attendance provisions in the past. We had, they were pretty complicated. You were looking all the time whether they had perfect attendance for each quarter of the year. A person out here sitting, like, tracking that, it was like, it was way too much. So we now have reinstalled an incentive of, if you have no illness stays for the whole year, we give you one day for the next year. So small incentive, but it was important to them. And then a little bit, we had not changed our longevity level at all, so a little bit of a bump for about 16 guys in this group. And then lastly, some clarifications on the working hours that were necessary due to some recent issues that have developed. So very good negotiation. We are partnering with the national office in a very productive way, and I think, I also mentioned that Rodney Kraft at Squadron Line serves as the local president for this group, and he's an excellent partner to work with.
Yes.
Any questions, anybody? Somebody, there's a motion before us?
The proposed, oh, move that the Board of Education ratify the proposed changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and National Association of Governmental Employees, Local R-260 for the period July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Great, thank you.
Great. And I just forgot to mention, they already ratified.
Oh, great.
So your vote tonight makes it official.
Good, 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 great. All right. Acceptance of a gift from the Friends of Simsbury Wrestling.
Yes, now we're going to mix it up.
Okay.
Over to me. For two gifts, the first from the Friends of Simsbury Wrestling for wrestling mats that will be used in practices, matches, and tournaments. The gift is estimated in value between $6,000 and $8,000 as they make their final selections. So there is a motion there for your consideration this evening.
I will move that the proposed gift of wrestling mats to the Athletics and Student Activities Department at Simsbury High School from the Friends of Simsbury Wrestling, valued between $6,000 to $8,000, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Uh, sorry. Approval of the unaffiliated salaries.
Yeah, I'm going to pick up here because your exhibit notes that it is anticipated that the chairman of the Personnel and Negotiations Committee will recommend compensation for an affiliated. Since Brian Watson is not here, I will speak on his behalf. This was part of the meeting. We had two parts to the meeting, the custodial contract and this annual discussion of unaffiliated employees. Unaffiliated employees is a group of between 40 and 45 people who don't fit neatly into one of the bargaining units. So almost everybody who works up here at Central Office, our OTs and PTs in the schools, our computer technicians, and a few other positions that, again, don't fit neatly in. So they go year to year. They don't negotiate, they don't have the power to negotiate, so they don't get the comfort of three-year contracts. As a result, we typically look at where the other contracts have settled, and we try to give them fair compensation. So tonight, Brian was supposed to recommend that the unaffiliated group be given a general wage increase of 3% for next year.
Any questions, discussions?
And then Brian was supposed to read a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I have the motion here. Do we all have it?
Move the salary range for the unaffiliated Board of Education employees and salaries for the central office administrators be increased by 3% for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Textbooks.
Back to me. So at our last Board of Ed meeting, I had shared proposed textbooks for the upcoming school year, 25-26. There are three. They are listed in detail on the back of your exhibit. Just as a reminder, these texts do come before curriculum committee before they are presented to you. So they have been here in my office and have answered any questions, and there's a motion there for your consideration this evening.
Move that the Board approve the textbook adoption for the 2025-26 school year as submitted by the administration.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Math? All right. So Sue is going to tee this up, but I'd like to welcome our math leaders from both Henry James Middle School, come on up, and Simsbury High School, as well as our principals are here to be involved, too. But Sue, if you could introduce kind of the outline of the math report and get us going.
Absolutely. So with us this evening are Pat Long, our Henry James Department Supervisor for Math, and Matt Milch, our Math Department Supervisor at the high school. And we have for you a robust 7 through 12 Board of Ed math report this evening. So just to give you a quick glimpse of the agenda, I am going to just share a couple of words about our vertical team that meets monthly, and then I will hand it over to Pat. He will give you the update relative to the middle school, inclusive of leadership priorities, celebrations, implications, next step of the work, and then we will take any questions after he's completed his report, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Milch to do the same. Okay? So to start us off, as a reminder, our math vertical team, that, look at that good-looking group up there. That picture was taken this year. I'll get to when that was taken and why we were all together. But this is a group that has representation of administrators, teachers from all seven of our schools with a variety of classroom experiences. And we've met monthly for two or three years now. We've been focusing on engagement specifically in the math classroom and what does that look like? And in your packets, you can refer to this later, one of the products of this group has been to develop a math engagement tool. So when students are engaged, what's going on? When teachers are engaged in the math classroom or implementing engaging practices, what does that look like? And what are the tasks looking like? So you can take a look at that, but I'm very proud of this group for putting that together. We've also been delving into a book study, a book called Building Thinking Classrooms. It's pretty hot right now in the field of math instruction and education, and it is all about very specific strategies that our teachers can implement to increase engagement in the math classroom. And you'll hear Pat talking more about that at Henry James specifically. So in November, we came together as a team, and we completed classroom walkthroughs using our tool and trying it out and saying, okay, like, this was great when we were all sitting around in the table, but how does it really live? And we had the opportunity to visit multiple schools, elementary, middle school, high school, and to see what adjustments we needed to make, what themes were we seeing, and how does this work lead to additional professional learning? So just wanted to share that. Matt and Pat both sit on that team and are crucial in the planning and the execution of that great work. So with that, I want to turn it over to Pat, and he will kick us off with Henry James and Math.
All right, thanks, Sue. Thanks, everybody, for inviting us and allowing us to share some of the great work that the teachers and the students have really been working on this school year. So this year at Henry James, our math priorities, we had quite a few. The first one was to increase student math performance. I think we could say that every year, but we were especially focused this year, and the way we were measuring that was through the Smarter Balanced Assessment, also known as SBACK. So really looking for some solid gains there. And as of right now, the scores themselves are embargoed, so I can't give specific numbers, but I can, I'd want to immediately report out on that one, that we were really happy with the progress of how those came out. The teachers, and I'll speak to what the teachers have done this year, but they really worked hard, and the students really worked hard, and it shows. So we're very excited about that. One of the ways that we wanted to go about that was to promote student problem-solving, engagement, and obviously content knowledge. Another piece that we've implemented this year is a new data platform. It's called iExcel. We use that both for student data, to monitor the students, to get an idea of where they are and how they can improve, as well as spiral review and assessment right within that platform. We also wanted to take a look at our assessments. We've been working towards common assessments for several years now. We, this year, we said, okay, we're going to make sure by the end of the year, we have common assessments across the board, and then on top of that, that we're completing scoring calibrations, so that way when, if a student is on any of the three different teams, say in seventh grade, that if they produce similar work on the assessment, they're earning a similar grade and really collaborating together on that. And then finally, using our PLCs and really making them data-focused. Those are professional learning communities. That's when teachers, for us, that's teachers of the same grade level and department, get together to talk about their craft. And really, we're, our goal was to be data-focused, to really look at the student progress and make sure that we're taking that information and giving the students the support that they need. So those were our goals for the year. So I did already jump ahead a little bit on the celebrations. That preliminary, preliminary data for SBACK, we were very excited. So seventh grade, as it says up there, the highest percentage we've ever had in seventh grade, meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations on the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And then for eighth grade, our goal was to have a cohort growth from last year, and we saw that, especially in our Level 2 Math 8 classes. We saw some great gains there, which was great. We also, this year, we had some Smarter Balanced prep sessions. So these were after-school math help sessions for a standardized test, and we had a great turnout. We, we had, the teachers all came and gave their time to support students with that, and we personally invited some specific students to come to that and then had it open up to other students who wanted to join as well. And really, we were excited by the turnout. There were about 30 to 40 students each time. We incentivized them, we offered some pizza, you know, to get them there, some raffle prizes. But really, like, we had, we had kids come after school to, you know, help themselves do better, both in class and specifically on the Smarter Balanced Assessment. So that was awesome. We'd love to see that continuing over the next few years. And then, as Sue mentioned earlier, we spent a lot of time with Building Thinking Classroom. So this is a book that's been out for a few years and really focused on practices to build student engagement, student problem-solving, and just build that love for mathematics. And so the big thing here, if you're not familiar with this, is that the students are really doing mathematics throughout the entire class. We've really tried to flip that script from the teacher being up front and doing most of the math throughout the year, throughout the lesson, to the students being up. They're working in small groups, they're working standing, they're collaborating, they're working on whiteboards, and then they get back together and they have some of that small group and independent practice time. And so the teachers, we've been looking at that together a little bit for a few years. This year, we really made it a focus. And so the, for the teachers, their goal was to implement that one to two times per week. And so what we really saw from that, from classroom observations, from the walkthroughs that Sue mentioned, and then through our own walkthroughs within the building, is really just that the students were much more engaged. They were, like I said, they were talking to each other, they were problem-solving. We saw students who, at the beginning of the year, were very nervous to even try to tackle a problem that they didn't already know exactly how to do. By mid-year, these students were, they were talking to each other, they were trying to tackle these problems. You were seeing different, different strategies to really help them. If they were stuck, they were communicating with other groups, they learned how to share ideas between groups without just copying. It was really just, it was amazing to see as a leader, and it was great to then have, when we had those district walkthroughs, to have that feedback from our colleagues about what they saw that they really thought was great and some feedback from them as well. So in addition, as I mentioned before, we had common assessments across the board, seventh and eighth grade classes. Really, I already talked about that one, but really just making sure that all students are seeing the same thing. Another one is making sure that we have the Common Course Standards directly in our course documentation. What the documents had right now was learning targets, so that would be something more student-friendly language. I can't- group and independent practice time. And so the teachers, we've been looking at that together a little bit for a few years. This year, we really made it a focus. And so the, for the teachers, their, their goal was to implement that one to two times per week. And so what we really saw from that, from classroom observations, from the walkthroughs that Sue mentioned, and then through our own walkthroughs within the building, is really just that the students were, were much more engaged. They were ta, like I said, they were talking to each other, they were problem-solving. We saw students who, at the beginning of the year, were very nervous to even try to tackle a problem that they didn't already know exactly how to do. By mid-year, these students were, they were, they were talking to each other, they were trying to tackle these problems. You were seeing different, different strategies to really help them. If they were stuck, they were communicating with other groups, they learned how to share ideas between groups without just copying. It was really just, it was amazing to see as a leader, and it was great to then have, when we had those district walkthroughs, to have that feedback from our colleagues about what they saw that they really thought was great, and some feedback from them as well. So in addition, as I mentioned before, we had common assessments across the board, seventh and eighth grade classes. Really, I already talked about that one, but really just making sure that all students are seeing the same thing. Another one is making sure that we have the Common Core standards directly in our course documentation. What the documents had right now was learning targets. So that would be something more student-friendly language. I can apply the Pythagorean theorem to solve real-world problems. And so what we did was, we went back through and we made sure that the correct Common Core state standard was linked right in those documents, so that you had both. You had, for, for the teachers, as they're planning their lessons, what is the expectation, and then what am I communicating to students as their learning expectation? So I mentioned before, iXL data to target specific area of need. So when the students go into iXL, they, they fill out an assessment. We used it to replace the STAR assessment that used to be used at Henry James. And we picked iXL because it gives us more specific information that we feel will help us and help our students. So we, what teachers did when we were in our data PLCs, we looked at a report that showed us the specific strands and how the students performed on those strands, and then the teachers took that information, said, okay, what's a, what's a high priority need for my class? And focused on that strand for a month. And they did that through their classroom instruction, they did that through the skills practice that they were assigning in iXL, and they did that when they were working with small groups to provide that, that intervention in the classroom. And really, we felt that this was a, a key component in our success this year and how the, the results came out at the end of the year on Smarter Balanced. And then again, as we've mentioned a couple times, the district math walkthroughs, we were really excited about those. So this year, the math vertical team, we had a day where we, we were able to hit schools at all the different levels, so the high school, middle school, elementary level, all in one day, and really just get a great view of different practices that students are seeing, you know, in, in twelfth grade, in seventh grade, in first grade, and see the commonalities of, of so much of what we're doing and that vertical of something that they're learning when they're younger, and then how it translates to the middle school and the high school, and also, again, to share ideas with each other. We don't get a whole lot of time together with teachers of other buildings, so when we do, we try to make the most of it, and that was, that was really helpful. And then last year, we had our eighth grade teachers collaborate with the high school algebra teachers. That was, that was awesome. We got to the high school, they got to come see us. This year, we focused the other way. We had the seventh grade teachers visit some sixth grade classrooms, and we were able to get to four elementary schools, again, in one day, and really see a lot of those engaging practices I was talking about that we've been trying to implement. The, the sixth grade teachers are doing the same in their classrooms. So it's just awesome to see the kids really engaging with math, working in groups, talking to each other, collaborating, and we're excited to then now have those students come join us next year and, and really showcase what they've learned. So that was, that was awesome. So as far as some current and future challenges, so one of, one of the big things right now is we have forty-minute instructional periods, three days a week, and for mathematics instruction, that, that's a little tight. So on those forty-minute days, you know, you really, we've tightened up our practices, we've made them as efficient as we can, but getting students started with some of these activities I've been describing, where they're, they're, they're moving, they're getting up on the boards, they're discussing. A lot of times, it feels like they're just getting into the discussion. By the time we have to break it down, we wanna make sure that we've recapped, that we've wrapped the lesson, and the teacher has really given that direct instruction. And sometimes, it's okay to say, okay, we're gonna continue this tomorrow, but there's other times where you really need to wrap that up. So that's just a challenge. We've been navigating it as much as we can and really, like I said, tightening those practices to make the most of those minutes every day. We're also looking at curriculum resource adoption. So we are currently using the old version of Math in Focus, which the elementary schools phased out. It is out of print, and so one of the issues there is like when we need to get new books, we, we, you know, we, it's, eventually, there aren't going to be new books to be had. We can still get them now. But we also want to decide what are we going to do here with our curriculum? What's our next resource going to be so that it's updated? So we will be working in collaboration with sixth grade, so that'll be a six-through-eight process in collaboration with Betsy Gonzalez on that process moving forward, and Sue, of course. And then another big one is the accelerated math pathway. So this is specifically the sixth grade pre-algebra, seventh grade algebra, eighth grade advanced topics. Really just having a discussion, this has been around for quite a long time. What, what does it look like now? What was the goal that was set out for it? Are we achieving that goal? And is that still the goal? So really, is it meeting the needs of the students we have in front of us now in 2025, 2026? So looking ahead to next year, talked about a whole lot of these things, but we wanna continue what we've started. I think we really, the, like I, like I said, the teachers and the students really put in the effort this year. It was amazing. It was walking around the halls this year, I was so excited by what I was seeing in the math classrooms. And so part of our work is to continue that and expand, and what's, what's the next step? How can we get better with our iXL practices? How can we make our classrooms even more engaging, take kids to the next level of problem-solving? As I mentioned, the curricular resource adoption, so we'll be looking at that, and that will start that in the fall. One thing over the summer that we'll be looking to do is update our pacing documents. Our teachers have been really good about staying within a few days of each other to make sure that, you know, we're, we're helping each other move along and that the students, again, are, are moving at the, an appropriate pace. We wanna make sure that we have it documented. By this point in the year, you wanna make sure you're here by this point, so that we know that by the time the end of the year rolls around, that we have taught the students everything that they need to know and are expected in those standards. And so that'll, that's something we'll be working on. Again, analyzing and revising iXL practices. So one of the big things that we did this year was rolling out that iXL pilot. We, we made it in expectations that students were working in there every single week. That was part of their homework assignment, and we'd really like to revise. We've learned a lot, and we'd like to revise some of those practices next year because we think it can be more, the students can use their time more effectively if we set the, the expectations a little bit differently than we started this year. So a focus more on, on skill mastery there with their practice. And that's something we've been really moving towards already, but it's gonna be set for the start of next school year. And then, again, just really that, that, looking at that accelerated math pathway, because that is something that, it starts at the elementary, it obviously is, lives with us at the middle school, but it also affects as they get to math at the high school, and what courses those students can take and how they're prepared for those courses. Alright, so another, another piece here is just financial implications and some support. So the iXL platform, that is, that is a cost. We replaced STAR, but we're looking to continue that pilot next year, and so obviously, we'll need to pay for that. The, the new curriculum resource funding, once we have selected what resource we'll be using, right now, we use hardcover textbooks, so most of the funding there is just replacement costs, and a lot of that comes from collecting fees for lost or missing books, but we'll be looking to replace that over the next few years with updated resources. And then math intervention, we're really looking at, you know, at really focusing on our math intervention piece. How can we support our struggling learners? Right now, we've got an interventionist who teaches some honors courses as well as some intervention classes. And so really, how can we make sure that the most students who need it are getting access to that? And then can we expand that over the next few years to include some more students and really help those students who are struggling? So the biggest thing that I would ask for you as Board of Ed members, and this, it, it doesn't cost anything, it, it's just, love math. And so I know there's, there's, there's an idea about it out there, I don't know if you know this or not, but like, not everybody loves math. And that would be like the number one thing. By the time kids get to middle school, they're hearing that, they're hearing it from media, we can't do anything about that. But sometimes, they're hearing it from, you know, their community, from home. So whether in your role as a parent, as a Board of Ed member, as a community member, as a student, just anything that you can do to just, to love math, hear all the great things that are going on, encourage the children to do it. We won't ever be able to put a measurement on how big of a difference that makes, but if the kids can walk in and they, they feel good about coming into math class every single day, that'll just, it'll make a huge difference. You know, talk to your kids about the exciting things you've seen with math. Talk to them about if you, if you read something cool, that's something somebody has done, especially if you read about a middle schooler or a high schooler who has done something, so it's not, it's not, yeah, yeah, well, they're an adult, right? They're an engineer, of course, they, they do math. When you hear about a teenager who did something really cool with math, share that with, you know, with other people, with students. And I think that, that'll just make a huge impact over the next few years.
Thanks.
Do you wanna do questions now?
Questions for Pat?
Okay. Yeah? Questions for Pat?
I, I have some questions.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for that update, it was really helpful. I have a few. So the iXL that you're, that you've piloted and you're gonna continue to pilot, is that a true pilot where it's just a subset, or is that the whole school that's getting access to iXL for next year?
For us, it's the whole school. And so we're considering a pilot because we were using STAR across the grade levels, including the elementary school. And so now it's, so for us, it's, it is the entire population at Henry James.
Great, that's what I was hoping for.
Yeah.
Next question, you talked about the limitations that the forty-minute instructional period should necessarily create. Are you looking at expanding the math block or time period? I know you tried blocks for a while, and the blocks were hugely successful, but is there some middle ground you guys are looking at?
So we, we have blocks right now.
I see Scott smiling.
Yeah. So we have blocks right now, and we, we really try to make those, like, if we've got a really in-depth activity, we try to make the most of those, of that time block right there. And then as far as expanding time or changing the schedule, that would, you know, that, that's not something that the math department can specifically look at. That, so, I, sorry, I'm gonna tag in.
It would be very, very challenging to make math one's length of time, and social studies a different length of time. So right now, we have a modified block schedule. So, you know, part of the rationale behind that is sometimes you're cooking along with, you know, in lessons that are designed for a forty, forty-five minute block, and then sometimes you wanna have more investigative type things with math. Probably if you give math teachers, they're saying they would want five fifty-minute periods a, a week. Right? But you can't do that. Then we have cooking classes where you wanna be able to, you know, you wanna be able to cook a recipe. You can't do that in forty minutes, but in your block period, now you have eighty minutes. So we have that eighty-minute period there. So that's why we have the modified block to.
So how often a week are the kids getting that eighty-minute block of math?
Once.
Once a week? So it's one eighty-minute, and then three forty minutes?
Three, forty minutes.
I see. So math, four days a week?
Yes. Every class, four days a week.
I see, every class, okay.
Sorry, it's gone.
And then my last question is on the new curriculum, six to eight timeline. So I know you guys are starting the process. Do you have a, a timeline with which you wanna have new curriculum implemented, and when is that timeline?
I, I can look that one.
Yeah.
Well, as you know, we just adopted Think Math, and that's the K through five. So I think next year is the year to delve in with a potential recommendation for implementation, what's that, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Okay. So not next school year, 'cause you're just starting the process, but the following school year, you wanna implement it then?
I'm hoping to. We'll ha, we'll have to see how the process goes. We have some curriculum that we are excited to investigate. We also want to see how the development of Think Math for their middle school population develops and what the timeline is there. So I would say, and we wanna make sure that any new curriculum comes before curriculum committee. So we'll see how far we get. It may be for twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have questions?
I have. On the, that first line of celebration is the SBA preliminary data.
Yes.
Now, all of that data doesn't come back until August?
Well, we get kind of rolling results. However, the state doesn't allow us to let out any specific data until they say, okay, we think all results are in, we're gonna do some district comparisons, and we're gonna roll it out. So they let us know that, and yes, you're right, that's usually in August.
But it's a big lag between when we have access and they say no.
When parents, right.
But it doesn't change.
It doesn't, well, that's what I was curious, it was like, you have preliminary, it says preliminary data, as if you don't have all of the data yet.
Yeah.
So two kids to still do a makeup. So we'd like, there's a couple, there's a couple kids to still take.
It's different than it was years ago, it comes really quickly.
Very fast.
Okay. So it's just a matter of, a few kids haven't taken it yet?
Correct.
I got, okay. And then the iXL asset, can iXL give data to us like STAR? Like, like I could, as a parent, go into a class and say, to my teacher and say, how did my child do on STAR at this time in spring, how'd they do in the fall, or whatever, and would be the opposite. But can you get that kind of data?
So, yeah, I follow you, yes. So absolutely, I think one thing that I have been talking to the department about is looking at a letter for parents at the beginning of the year, it's like, what, what info do you, have you heard, what questions have you heard from parents that we can answer upfront next year? And so that is one piece, is you can, you can log in with your child, you can't, there's no parent account, but you can log in with your child and look at, at their scores and see a, a progress update. The scoring, it's, it's a different scoring continuum than it was for STAR, so it's getting used to that, you know, getting used to those scores and what they mean. But that's something absolutely, and I, I think there's a lot of resources there for a parent. I think that's, that's a goal for me for next year, is how, how do I communicate this better with the, the parents and the, versus the community?
Because I have to tell you that I don't, and I would bring this to curriculum as well, but the, I think as a parent, it is not a automat, or at least it hasn't been in my four kids. None of them have automatically offered me STAR information, I've had to ask for it. So I think if there is a platform where you can access it, then kids, then parents will know and maybe be happier about loving math.
Yep.
If they understand where the kids are falling short or whatever, and bringing them involved. The other thing was, you said that you don't often get together with teachers in the other buildings, and I'm pretty sure, don't we, isn't that, what are those called, is when we have?
Vertical teams.
The vertical teams. And so why doesn't Henry James part of the vertical teams?
I'm sorry, what I meant in that case, so we, we are a part of the vertical teams, and we get to do that. What I meant was all of the teachers having a chance to get together. So the vertical team is a few members from each school. And so in this case, it was, it wasn't literally all of our members in each of those things, but more of our members got to get together and have a conversation. So when we did the collaboration with high school last year, it was all of our eighth grade teachers with all of the high school algebra teachers. This year, it was all of our seventh grade teachers went, and they, they went to a couple different school, uh, four different schools and met with some of those teachers as well. And we do have opportunities throughout the year. But I, so I guess when I say not very often, it just, you know, with teachers in your own building, you get to talk to them all the time. And then teachers in the other buildings, it's, you know, it's a few times a year. And so when we do have those opportunities, we just wanna make sure we take advantage because we have a lot to offer each other.
And then my last question was on your next steps, you said something about this, this, the, that pathway where sixth graders get to go at Henry James, you know, and that kind of stuff? And I certainly have had some experiences with that as well, but I'm curious as to what is your timeframe to decide whether or not we're gonna keep that program, not keep that program, when, how are you in?
I'll take this one because it has more implications, right? Six, twelve? I think we're going to look at it really hard in the fall, and we'll be giving you a curriculum committee update on our progress. So I'm, don't want to.
Overpromise.
Overpromise? But it's something I think that we have to look at. We have a, a lot of different data points, and we implemented this course or this pathway over a dozen years ago.
Yeah.
And we haven't come back to look at it to say, is this what colleges and universities want us to do? Those students who we thought would be served by this, are they? Are they kind of taking that Calc BC course, which is our top course, or are they not? And we accelerate the pathway and then merge lanes when they get to ninth grade.
Correct.
And that's in geometry level one. So we just, as Pat said, we wanna take a stop and pause and say, is this serving our students in the best way possible? So more on that.
And we've talked about that at curriculum too. And we've talked about that at curriculum too. Like I don't, cause if you don't do a certain path, that's it, you're messed up. And so I think it's a great idea. Very nice.
On roads, off ramps.
Yeah.
On ramps and off ramps.
Remember Scott Baker will know that my oldest did not get into the sixth grade program, but went on and took BC. So I, you know, I don't think it's a dead thing. I think parents get more wrapped up to do it than we need to.
So, and I'll just historically point out, I was really as the high school principal at the time, not in favor of the program. Cause I'm like, there's nowhere to go. If they get to calculus by junior year, what are we gonna do? Which was a little bit of the impetus of that eighth grade advanced topics course. Now, twenty years later, if you're a gifted math student, you can take computer science, you can take stats, you'd still be on your way to calculus. So there's a lot more options than when we first were contemplating those decisions.
And I would say the flip side is there's still conversation about what you do with that accelerating student when they're younger.
That's right.
And how do you support them appropriately? So it's kinda, it's kinda both ends.
Yeah, it's like a both ends.
Any, any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, a couple. Um, appreciate the opportunity. So a couple of things. So I know we're putting something in place this year and it sounds like positive results, but do we, when will we have, and not just Sback, but numbers, right? And where I'm going with that is right, I'm just kinda looking, looking ahead at like the high school update, right? And I can see like number two in Derg, right? And I've got percentages of people scoring certain things and, and things of that nature. But I don't have any of that for middle school to see kinda a trend line. And I think we've talked about this before. It'd be really interesting to see like a three, four-year block of like, where are we in Derg? Where are we on like Sback scores, like those things? Cause we don't have any metrics to go off here, right? It's kind of more qualitative than quantitative. And then like the survey data is great from the high school. I'd like to see what we can do about middle school survey. Cause without those metrics or that feedback, kinda what we have right now is a plan in place. But right, when you're trying to say, is it working or where are we? Is it trending? It's hard for at least me to kinda look at these numbers and say, is the lived experience matching the results, right? So that's something I would ask for maybe in the fall when we have the Sback numbers. But it would be good to see like over a four-year run, let's just say whatever's realistic. Where's Sims Berry Middle School when it comes to math and Derg and Sback? You know, others. Like where are we at, right? Like, cause I can look at the high school here and say like, okay, number two in Derg, yep. Eighty-eight percent, ninety-four percent. I can look at the survey and say, okay, seventy-five percent, maybe, right? It's like, it's easy to like take what's being said and back it up with the metrics, right? So I would say, you know, I appreciate what's gone into it this year and getting on that right track. Sounds promising for what you're saying about the seventh graders, but I think what's missing is the metrics and the numbers to back that up, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. Yeah. So we don't, uh, like I said, it's, it's embargoed right now for this year's metrics, but we can get those to you in.
Yeah, we can provide that run in the fall for sure. Yep.
Yeah, that'd be good to come back and say like, where do we stand in comparison to where we've been, where are we going? And our, and our neighbors. And then I would just say, then on this sheet, right? So I was looking at this, right? And it kinda looks like it was from October. And then future agenda items talked about next level data for the specific students, how will we support their growth? Did, kinda like what's next on that front?
So, so yeah, so that was a sample agenda. So we did have follow-up meetings where, where we met and had those. I just wanted to provide, I, you know what? I didn't mention it in my report, but I wanted to provide a sample of what those data PLCs look like. So we have monthly data PLCs.
This is an ongoing thing.
So we, we meet as a PLC regularly, at least once a month. It's about student data and usually from, that we get from IXL. When we, when we give an assessment and we score it together, we're able to look at that again separately. Um, our monthly data meetings are usually about IXL until we get the smarter balanced results and then we're able to talk about those as well.
And then I think the sixth and seventh grade connection is awesome. I think getting them more prepared coming in. I would be curious, is there anything feedback coming the other way that when they get to ninth grade? That you get feedback from the high school math department, made part of that vertical team of like what they're seeing coming in? Where are kinda the weak points or what could be stronger to kinda get them up and running? It's almost like a segue question between the two of you, but I'm just curious, like I know the sixth to seventh is about getting them more prepared. But then also what's that feedback we're getting about where, where the kids coming in ready or maybe behind, something of that nature? Is there any of that feedback going that way?
We, we do have some of that throughout the year. Um, so, so last year, like I said, last year, the algebra groups, the eighth grade teachers and the ninth grade algebra groups had a good chance to discuss. And then I would say when we're at more department-based professional development, it does feel like the middle school and the high school tend to get together a little bit more. Um, and so there's some of that, uh, a little more informally in that case. Um, and then Matt and I get to talk to each other, you know, mul- uh, very often. So Matt and I get to talk. And then this year also, we did continue with that algebra discussion. They, the, some of the teachers put together, they revamped, the, the final exam was almost a common, now it is a common final exam between the, the middle school and the high school. And so that just immediately brings up some of that discussion again.
And go back to Jen's question from earlier, like the, we did meet as a, as a, as a seven, twelve teachers. Uh, we had two departments, so we each gave up sort of department meeting time so that we could all get together and do some activities together. Cause there were people that just didn't know each other.
Yep.
Which was, you know, sort, you know, there, there's people that have been around for twenty-five, thirty years, but then there's, there's people that have been hired in the last, you know, five or six that had no idea who that teacher was. Um, so we did get to meet.
Yep.
Uh, we'll continue that process.
I think that the next level of conversation, Josh, to your point, is our students that are currently in algebra in eighth grade, let's say. When they go to geometry, what is that experience like, right? Or having some of those additional conversations. Um, so, next up.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. I think like I said, the, the metrics and like if there's any survey data or, I don't know if it's parents or students or amongst teachers, what they're seeing. I think it would just be helpful to now that we've got the plan in place, see what the numbers do to support that plan being productive.
Ready for high school?
Oh, I have one more question. This, the survey that you guys gave to the high school students, will you be giving this survey or a similar one to the Henry James students?
We were not planning on using that survey this year, so I'd have to, I'd, you know, look at the survey.
Maybe it'll become a little bit clearer because the high school curriculum review this year was about getting more information about the student's lived experience. So that was something very specific to the high school.
Okay.
That we just administered in March, April. It was administered and now they're taking a very different look at those results and how that will equate to an action plan. So it's not that it's out of the realm of possibility. It just wasn't the initial plan. It was very specific to the high school.
I think it'd be very useful to give to Henry James students, especially as you're considering new curriculum. Like some of these questions, just from personal experience, I, I sus- suspect the numbers would be different for things such as the actual test questions are similar to what I did in my homework. And so I think as you're looking at curriculum, something like this would be really useful to give to the middle school students, the Henry James students, to get their lived experience as well.
Thank you.
Agreed. Yeah, I think hearing from some data beyond that would be important. Cause I think again, you can pick that up and say this aligns with what we're hearing. Cause we're hearing it from here too, right? So I think that's all important.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto SHS and Mr. Milch.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us out here. We, we do appreciate the opportunity to brag on ourselves a little bit, but also dig deeper and find out what we can do better. Um, so our priorities this year, first as, as Sue had mentioned earlier, was to engage all learners every class, every day. We use that engagement tool, um, that we created in the math vertical team. That is part of all the observations that are done, uh, for the teachers in the department. So every time I'm in a classroom, I have that in front of me as my notes, uh, to, you know, when I'm looking at the class. The teachers all have that in front of them as well. And that was one of our main focuses this year. As again was just mentioned, we also want to assess the students' math experience in the classroom. So what do they feel about what's going on? What do they feel about their homework, their classwork? We had different categories as well as some open-ended questions. Uh, our continued, uh, view is looking at, uh, SAT success for all students. So giving every student opportunity to find success on the SAT. Increase student access to calculus and computer science, especially our, um, our smaller groups, you know, our different demographics in, in the high school. Making sure that everyone has an opportunity to get to those courses that, um, previously were, were unachievable, which is fantastic to see. And you'll see some of the results as we get to them. And the last thing we focused on this year was enhancing our curriculum documents. So previously our curriculum documents and our maps all had, um, there was one for say Algebra II. And it noted that we had some that were, um, not taught in this class or some that were taught in this class. So now we have separate ones. So we could really look at the whole trajectory. So all of our Level Two classes, do we have every single standard covered in the, in all of those Level Two classes or Level One classes? So we can really look at them separately. So to talk about some of our celebrations, so as was mentioned, you know, last year in two thousand and four, we were number two in the Derg, which was a great achievement for us. You know, and, and this year again embargoed information, but, um, there was growth in, in the cohort group. The one thing we're looking at, we weren't satisfied with the, with the actual results. But in comparison to our, into the rest of the Derg, everyone else dropped. We didn't. Um, so that was one of the things there. Our AP scores were absolutely fantastic, both in terms of number of students taking APs and the results themselves. You know, our, our BC calc, a hundred percent of the students passed and that's getting a three or higher. Uh, our AB students, that's twenty-five students took the exam, eighty-eight percent of them. And, and the, the rest of the results are in there. Um, the biggest two for me are AP statistics where when I got here, that was, we had roughly eleven to fifteen students in that class. Uh, next year we're gonna have sixty-four. Um, so we've really grown that, that course. And it's, and it's been a lot of work, you know, recruiting in those courses, but also, um, to give more students an opportunity to get college credit for, for a class. Uh, BC calculus, for those who don't know, that, that is the equivalent of two semesters of calculus in high school, of, in college. So students that, that score that get eight college credits for taking that one, one class. And now, you know, with AP stats growing so much and AP computer science, now so many more students are getting to, to take college credit classes. The other things we're working on is, is our math competitions and honor societies. We have a math honor society, which was formed under my tenure. Uh, it is mu alpha theta. So for those of you who like to geek out on, on Greek letters, that just spells math, um, which was just fun for them. But, uh, we have sixty-three students in that group. They, um, they provide, you know, tutoring service to the, to their, to the rest of the school. So they're in there, I unlock the math lab every morning at seven o'clock and there are honor society students in there to offer support to their, to their classmates. Uh, they come in, in during their free time and, and lab times, you know, into the lab as well to help tutor, um, so that we have more students that can help in the, the math lab. Our computer science honor society was started again under my tenure and there are, uh, there are, sorry, twenty-three students in that. And that is responsible for the hour of code as well. So those students push into all of the other schools in the district to teach computer science all the way down into kindergarten. They design lessons, they implement those lessons there. In terms of our math competitions, uh, we have a couple that we participate in. One is Nemo, the New England Math League. And you'll love this one. It is a hundred dollars flat fee for the entire year for the entire school. So very cost efficient. But we have, it's six competitions a year and we have over a hundred students, a hundred twenty students, uh, roughly every single time that happens. For two years in a row, we were the, uh, champions in our region. Uh, this year, not so much, but it's okay. We're, we'll get back to it again. Another math competition we participated in is the Camel, which is the Capital Area Math League. And again, this year we were invited to the state championship where there were thirty schools invited and we placed eleventh in that. So, uh, also we, uh, participated in Etna actuarial, actuarial program, uh, which was fantastic. So we brought a group of students to Etna. Um, they were able to shadow, uh, actuarial, actuarial professionals and, and see what they do on a regular basis. They then invited one of our students who was actually a freshman last year, um, to be part of an internship. And he's been working with them and going back and forth. And this year, um, you know, with, with busing costs going up so much, we, we didn't have the funds to do that. And they said, whoa, whoa, you're not coming? And they sent a bus for us. Which was just absolutely wonderful. So they sent a bus for us and paid for lunch and brought our students over there so that we can make sure to participate that. Uh, in terms of our SAT work, uh, we've done a couple of things, especially, you know, mostly focused on our Algebra II students, which are the, the juniors that are taking SATs. So we had a couple of things going on. One, we, we had a little, a two or three-week mini lesson, mini unit that we had right before the SATs to refresh students' memories on some of those topics that they just haven't seen in a long time. Cause the SAT is supposed to be all encompassing of everything they've learned in height, in, in all of mathematics, you know, even though it's halfway through their junior year. But they haven't seen, you know, a histogram in, in five years. So getting some of those topics that we know are hot topics on the SAT to work with the Algebra II students and Algebra II II. And then in Algebra II Level Three, what we did is we had a Friday session. So every single Friday that was part of our curriculum for the, for the, starting in January. And students worked on Khan Academy and other thing, other activities, um, that really honed in on those SAT skills. So next year that group, you know, jumped ahead a little bit and to build on what Pat has worked on in the middle school. Those students are also gonna be using IXL. So we're replacing some of the Khan Academy and other work we're doing with IXL as we expand that off to the Algebra II, III group. So they are very excited about that. The teachers are. Uh, in terms of our recruitment, um, into those classes that I mentioned, um, again, we have worked, uh, our teachers have worked very hard on getting that in front of, getting that, those courses in front of other students. So our computer science teachers, our statistics teachers actually push in and give a little mini session to, to, uh, tenth graders and eleventh graders to just tell them a little bit about that course. Specifically what we did this year is seeing some of the numbers in, especially our calculus class and our computer science classes. We gave out personalized invitations. So I made up little, 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 you know, little cards and taped a little candy to the back. And I gave three to each geometry teacher and Algebra II teacher and said, what I'd like you to do is, is pull some students aside that are in those underrepresented groups that don't always get to those courses. And, and really talk to them individually about why that course would be good for them. So it's an individual conversation, not just a whole class like, yeah, they're not talking about me. No, no. You know, Mrs. Barker really thinks I can do this and thinks I'll be successful at this. So we did those and it really helped in our, um, in our numbers. So, uh, which I'll talk about in a little bit. In terms of our capstone, we, which was mentioned earlier, which was a fantastic day last week. Uh, we've seen a huge, uh, increase in involvement, uh, from the math side. So we have students that are coming to us saying, hey, I'd love to be a TA in your class. Uh, can I do that as part of my capstone? Can I do in terms of stats and computer science, huge growth in terms of those students wanna do their capstone in math. So, um, nice changes, uh, that have, that are going on there. And then, uh, lastly, we also, uh, the, our big focus, as Sue mentioned earlier, was serving our students. So getting their opinions about what's going on in the math class. And in a moment, we're gonna get into some of the specifics, looking at some of the metrics that Josh wanted to look at. But really, you know, getting into, to what the students feel in the classroom. So here are some of our, our results that, that we'd like to celebrate. So seventy-six percent always are often, we did use the Likert scale, so we could really see the positives and the negatives and kind of weed out the neutral ones a little bit. But seventy-six percent of our students always are often have enough time to, in class, to ask my teacher questions. Seventy-five percent of our students always are often say my teacher helps me when I need it. Seventy-nine percent always are often have a positive relationship with their teacher. Uh, and we know how important that is as well. Sixty-five percent always are often feel the review packets prepare me well for the test. All the rest of the details are in your packets as well. They, they get a review packet and they feel prepared. So those are some of the, the things to celebrate. Some of the things that we're gonna still work on a little bit. On the next slide is, um, thirty-five percent of our students sometimes rarely or never feel that they were able to complete the homework based solely on the lessons or notes from class. So they, they get to something in class, they get stuck. So about a third of students, a little more than a third of students feel like, hey, this is still really hard. Um, twenty-eight percent of students sometimes rarely or never, so I threw in the, you know, the, the neutral one a little bit. Um, rarely or never complete the review packet as part of their test preparation. So we give them a review packet. Um, either they're frustrated or they just don't. That part of it I, I wasn't able to, to tease out, but, um, twenty-eight percent of our students say they, they don't complete the review packet in their preparation. And seventeen percent feel that they rarely or never receive helpful feedback after the assessment. So they get feedback or they get a grade, but they don't necessarily know what they can do to improve. So those are the areas where we're really gonna focus on next year. In terms of our open-ended questions that we had after each category, um, some of the things that we're gonna work on is to segregate that data to the teacher level. So one of the questions I did ask is what is your teacher? So now we could look at, is this an Algebra II issue? Is this Mr. Milch issue? And we could really look at, so my work this summer is gonna look at it at that teacher level and get that feedback back into the teacher's hands. We're gonna take a more in-depth follow-up in terms of our extra help. That one was baffling to me. Because my office is, for those who don't know, you know, up on the third floor is right outside the math lab. And I have never gone by that room where there's not multitudes of students in there for various reasons, whether they're taking, um, assessments, makeup assessments if they're out or they're assigned there to get some extra help, or they're just dropped in to get their homework done. But it was also the last section. So, I mean, there could be a lot of things. There was the last section of the survey, so I don't know if there's fatigue on the survey. But, um, there was a significant number of students that say, hey, I, I never do that. But we have twelve hundred students every single quarter go to the math lab. So there's clearly a disconnect somewhere. You know, some of the other, uh, open-ended question themes were the best aspect of being a math student, which including they're good teachers and they're deep learning. But they also said that they'd like a slower pacing, more personal teaching methods, um, more helpful feedback and maybe a lighter workload. So those are the, some of the open-ended questions that we're gonna continue to work on. Some additional information that was asked of me at our curriculum meeting, um, one in regards to our, our change in terms of, uh, graduation requirements. So we now, the students in Sims Berry required only three credits of, of math as part of their high school career. Eighty-six percent of students are still taking at least one math as seniors. So very few students have chosen not to take math. In fact, we're one of the few departments that we actually teach more students than exist in the building. So because students take two maths, they may take pre-calculus and AP stats, or they may take a computer science class and Algebra II. We actually teach more students than we have. Um, so that tells me again that they're, they're finding the value and they're, they're engaged in those classes. In terms of our recruitment, you know, I kinda wanted to break it down a little bit by the areas that historically, uh, we don't see historically in math classes is very male-oriented, but in our school, um, those numbers pretty much match up with our student body. So very close to fifty-fifty, you know, you know, not quite, but pretty close. Um, our computer science class historically have been male white students in that class. In fact, in, uh, the, the, uh, the board who governs, uh, computer science, which it's relatively new still, they put out a huge thing on things that you can't put in the classroom and you should take off your walls because computer science was so, um, focused on males and, and white students. But we have done in terms of our recruiting that, that we have fifty-eight percent and forty-one percent, which is actually, um, a lot, a lot fairer than our student body in general. which is actually, um, a lot, a lot fairer than our student body in general. In AP stats, again, you know, getting to college credit, it is fifty-three percent, forty-four percent. So very close to fifty-fifty in terms of male, female. Um, other things that were asked on this survey that we could pull out, that was asked, um, of me. Uh, one of them is looking at tutors. So if you recall, um, three years ago, we did a survey of families in the community. And at that time, they said forty point one percent said, um, that they have a tutor. The family said that they have a tutor. When we asked the students, thirteen point nine percent of all students have a tutor. So it's a much different number. So it's, it's based on the student report. Yeah. And we also asked them which grade they started the tutor. But they said they don't, the question was, uh, I don't remember the exact wording, but do you access, do you access a tutor outside of class, um, that, that you pay for? So, um, thirteen point nine percent of students said that. Ten point five percent of all students, um, started using that in high school. So there is some students that start actually in elementary school. There's a good chunk of students that start in elementary school and some start in middle school. So, uh, ten percent of all students, you know, in high school started their tutoring in high school. And the last thing was asked about math lab, I already mentioned that number, so.
That was additional information that curriculum committee asked for.
And ten percent is still a good chunk of thirteen percent. Math person.
Was the forty-one percent from families all across the district or just?
The survey was put out to all families.
Okay, so not just high school families?
Correct.
Yeah.
Um.
No, it was just.
I'll have to read, I think it went to just high school, families. I believe it went to just high school.
I think it's not, yeah, it's not even in the back there.
Yeah, I don't remember, uh, in elementary.
No, I, I think it was high school.
Okay.
I, I will confirm and get back to you. Thank you for that question.
Yeah, I think you're right. I stand corrected.
Yeah. Twelve hundred visits per quarter.
Yeah. That's a lot.
Are we a question?
No, no.
No. I'm just, I'm just reiterating the last point that he made.
Yeah.
I'm done, we still have another.
Yes, that's.
So bizarre.
But I mean, I have, we keep a running spreadsheet because there's no, there's no other way to keep track of it. So we have a, a Google Doc, a Google spreadsheet that we keep. Um, and as students come in, actually, they, they actually write their name on the board and what math teacher they're from, what they're there for, whether it's, you know, to get some help or maybe they're a tutor or they've made up an assessment. But, sorry, I know they're coming in, I know they put their name on the board because we just, all we do is type in, you know, that into our spreadsheet. Um, but then they didn't say that on the survey, so we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, we're, Matt will get to the next steps of the work and what he's going to do with some of these results. Again, these are pretty fresh, um, in their analysis and also in action planning, so.
Um, in terms of our spring results, there, again, as I mentioned, there, there was growth in the cohort, even though I was not satisfied with the numbers and we're going to dig into some of those. Um, some of the other questions that have come up that we're going to continue to work on, um, is our students, uh, the students had dropped courses. So, uh, we worked very hard on keeping students in their class that they were recommended to. So, you know, finding ways that, that we can help them be successful in their class. And our drop data has been relatively flat over the last couple of years. It's predominantly been in, uh, freshmen in geometry. And then something else that comes up every once in a while. So a couple of years ago, there was a big drop in Algebra II II for some reason. Um, digging into it, my belief it was a little bit of post-COVID where, um, SAT scores, uh, were a hundred percent optional for all colleges, but now grade point average was higher. So like, hey, maybe if I go into a lower level, I can get an A versus, you know, maybe getting that knowledge and getting a B or, you know, C maybe. Um, so we had a huge jump, you know, that was three years ago. Um, you know, so it changes, the other part of it changes, but predominantly it's, it's still our honors job. Uh, but we've looked at that and also looked at our students getting D's and F and they have dramatically dropped over the last four years. Uh, we've cut them down by fifty percent. So a whole lot less students are getting to those kind of grades. Um, looking for where we're going, so funds for curriculum revisions. As we continue to look at, uh, things that are important to us, we know that there are, there are things we need to work on and improve. As I mentioned, we, uh, worked on those, that first step is getting those maps together so we can see where the standards are and where we're missing holes. But then we're going to have to work on those to, to fix those. Um, we're going to continue to look at our intervention structures. As Pat had mentioned earlier, that's a big push for him in the middle school, same for us in the high school. So how do we get to those students that are struggling and how do we help them be successful? And the last thing is, um, Pat's, uh, in middle school, they've worked on, uh, building thinking classrooms. We worked on the engagement tool. So now we're going to, uh, dig deeper as a, as a high school into that building thinking classroom. So one thing I'm requesting in terms of funding is the funds to, to purchase those for the high school teachers. So our next steps, uh, is really, uh, get these details from the survey into the hands with our, of our department and look for how can we respond, how can we improve? How can we make the experience better for our students? Uh, another thing we're going to look at is, that came out two years ago, two and a half years ago now, is AP pre-calculus. Um, so that is a new course to college board that they came up with. They've had a lot of revisions to it this year. And we're going to look at that as, as our next step. So three teachers are going to look at that, um, look at two things. One, look at what professional development is out there so they can learn more about it, but also provide, uh, a mapping so we could see what are, what are our current honors pre-calculus students do? What are our current Level Two pre-calculus students do? What does this new AP pre-calculus look like? Um, examine engagement from student, um, from the student perspective versus the teacher. That was the one, that was the one, more than the math lab even, that was one that, that really struck me, uh, when we did the survey. Because part of our, our teachers' professional growth plans this year, I would say probably eight of the fifteen, um, had some kind of, I'm going to develop these lessons for this unit. I'm going to develop these lessons, engaging lessons for these units. But what we call as math teachers' engaging lesson clearly is not, um, what the students said. The students said, hey, I, I love playing that game. I love doing that around the world. I loved it. And to me, those are review activities. The kids found them fun, but they're not new content lessons. But the kids really, every time they had an opportunity to mention those, they mentioned those. But what we were doing is working on a discovery, um, an activity that, that built that, that curriculum and those kind of things. And so there's clearly a disconnect. And as Pat had mentioned with IXL, some of that is in the communication. So if we're communicating to the students at the beginning, they're, hey, these are the things that we're going to look at to help you have ownership of your learning and these engaging, so it's some of that, some of that salesmanship, but we need to do that upfront.
One of the things that Matt and I spoke about is, once we've looked at these results a little bit and he's had the opportunity with his department members to develop an action plan, do we need some follow-up focus groups of students to tease some of this out a little bit? Things that we just couldn't get through, through the survey. So more to come on that. We don't know what that might look like yet, but we haven't ruled that out as a possibility to learn a little bit more from the students themselves.
And to, to continue on, so another thing is increasing feedback to students on the assessments themselves. Um, that was one of the things that was mentioned. And then our IXL, I've already spoken about that, but we're going to, we, we're now increasing it not only for the students we currently use, if we're just interventions, that was part of our pilot, figuring out, um, the students that, that needed most, let's start there. Uh, next year, we're going to use it for all freshmen. So we have a measure for every single freshman in the high school, as well as that Algebra II Three class, which is our neediest students in terms of their, um, their SAT success.
I think we hit most of these.
I think so.
Actually, and the financial implications and support needed. But just that professional learning time we've talked about. How do we ensure that our teachers are provided that professional development to strengthen their content, to talk about the best pedagogy and how that interplays with the feedback we've already received from kids?
Rick, hold on, I'm going to take this one off. I know you were going to jump in there. So, um, and I know, I know these, the survey is very fresh, so maybe these are unfair questions. But it, it's, I'm looking at the relationship. You've got two questions about sort of the relationship between the review packet and the assessment themselves. Right, it's kind of a difference. And I'm looking, again, maybe unfairly, looking at the always, um, response, which in this case, I, I, that's the one we, we need to strive to get to a hundred percent, right? But there clearly seems to be a disconnect when four out of five kids that say, suggest that the review packet is not, um, reflected on the assessment. And flip side, that this assessment is not reflective of the review packet. Not, not saying obviously, right, in no way, shape or form am I saying that those exact questions on the review packet should be on the assessment. But that, that one kind of stands out to me. Just curious, you know, your, your thoughts on that.
Yeah, and like I said, so when, so you're looking at always versus the often. And that's, and that's the hard one for me is, what does that mean? You know, you know, was there one question on there that really threw you that, oh, I didn't expect this question? Or, you know, so when I look at those, you know, I'm looking at forty-five, sixty-five percent. So nearly two-thirds of the students said the actual test questions are similar to those questions. Again, similar, not the same, um, so a third of students are, are in a different category. But if you look at the flip side, if you look at the never or the rarely, that's really low. Um, so, and again, there was also that, that other note in there that I mentioned earlier. Twenty-eight percent of students do not complete the review packet. So I don't know if all of those students know that. So that's, that's where some of that, that digging.
Yeah, that might be a focus group, uh, you know, after a specific assessment that we, we ask a little bit more and.
Four out of five kids are saying that the review packet is not always helping them. That's, that's a little concerning to me.
Yeah, I hear you.
How often do we change the review packets?
Every year. Every year for every assessment.
Do they get each, okay.
Yeah.
They're new.
No, they a hundred percent new, no, but they, they match. They match what, hey, we didn't get to this, this topic or we did get to this topic. So we, we make those changes to match the assessments that the students have prepared.
Jeff?
Okay, I have a couple of things. One is the most important and pressing to me is every single student who takes a math class took the survey? You never put how many kids took the survey, or at least I didn't see it.
It was a thousand and sixty, so every.
Every single student at, so that high.
Every, every class, yeah.
So could a kid have put in multiple ones?
Sure, if they're taking multiple math classes.
Multiple classes, yeah, yes. So every single class had this. Now, was every single student present on those days that they did? No, um, but.
I didn't know if it was certain grades or certain classes.
But we also wanted to do it so, so a student that's taking Algebra II and a student that's taking computer science may answer differently.
Right.
So we wanted to make sure that we had both of those represented.
Okay, then on the packet review, my question is, and, and you probably don't know the answer now, but something to just keep in mind is that the question right before where it says, my teacher provides an answer key in class review, et cetera, so I can check my answers. I think that et cetera is kind of, it'd be interesting if you can, and maybe that needs a focus group, but the, the et cetera, like some teachers will only post it like the day before they'll do the answer key and they will not go through it ahead of time with the kids in class. And so I think that will also, the when part of that is, is, would be an interesting one to be able to figure out.
Part of that preparing this topic, right?
Right, like do you go through it in class? Then, um, just from my own personal experiences, we used to have math classes that are reverse taught, where they go and watch a video and then they come to school to talk about, so they're not really taught, or.
Flip classroom, yeah.
For classroom. So are we still allowing, not allowing, is that permitted? This whole idea of revert or flip classroom.
So permitted, allowed, sure. Um, but as a whole, math across the country didn't look happily on that. I don't know how else, um, it was not successful in math. Um, some of the issues were, and I've seen it in, in class, so sometimes we'll still use some of those video lessons that we create ourselves, not from other people, but like our own teachers have made. Uh, and we'll use them for, say, after a test. So if you finish early, watch this video to introduce the next unit. Um, students don't listen to it, so they either don't put their headphones in, because you could see the teacher filling out the note packet and you could see what's being written and they're completing that in their own note packet. But, and again, it's not all students, but they don't listen to the actual teaching and all the stuff that's going on. And that's where the disconnect is coming. We, we had, uh, when I first got here, they're, they were much more prevalent, especially around COVID time. We had a lot more of these videos out there. Um, and we found students didn't watch it or they put it on and just let it play so then it records the fact that.
And it wasn't always student, our, our recordings. It would be like you have to go watch this on.
Khan Academy or something.
Pretty rare for us. I mean, that may have been in the past, I mean, for us, um, I would say.
It's a prevalent practice.
It's not, it's not prevalent at all in the school, but when we have them, there are our own videos. And they match our note packet.
And so now we're not really doing that.
No, we have them available, it's like, so for example, this week, and Pat and I were joking about earlier, seniors are out all over the place, math has mixed classes where, like today, I had seven students out of a twenty-four student class. Um, but on our websites, we have a, a Google site for this unit, so Khanic sections. Um, there's a video that follows our notes that the students can access. They could still get the notes from today, not having to go to a classmate or something else. They could see Mrs. O'Donnell going through, um, nine point two, which is ellipses, and they could learn about ellipses even though they weren't in class tonight. So we do have those available, um, and we have them on our website, but students.
Yeah, that's my, from, my experience was that it was the lesson. They were, they would go home, here's your homework and, and go. Okay, then the, um, the math lab question, um, the twelve hundred visits per quarter, that could be this, a multiple, a same child coming back over and over again.
Oh, absolutely.
In the same day even.
Yes.
Um, I guess it's possible. Um, yeah, it, because they were only coming during their study hall or if they're assigned. So if they have multiple study halls, if they're coming in the same day, sure, it's possible.
So my, my question would be, and, and it kind of goes back to you, Pat, but it's like, if we could, it's, to me, this data shows that we are clearly not utilizing the math lab function as well as it could be to its potential. So I would have thought younger kids maybe are more influenced by math lab. And if they get used to an environment like that at Henry James, then maybe once they get to the high school, they'll be more willing to go and learn from a student versus or.
So we don't, we don't have a math lab at Henry James. We have, um, ASC, which is the Academic Support Center. Um, and so we have that for math and that's an assigned class period. So that might be opposite their music class. It would be in place of a study hall, it might be opposite of their music class, um, or, or something like that. And that's an, that's an intervention. So that's, they, they would be part of the student intervention team would recommend them for that course. And then we have Tier Two math, which is a, um, a full period, so it would be every day that that period meets. And that's a more targeted, again, through the student intervention team or recommendations out of the elementary school. But, um, just because of how the middle school schedule works, a math lab isn't something that we've explored because the, most of the students wouldn't have the availability in their schedule.
They don't use that.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, and our schedule's a little different. So a math lab's more of a, a high school thing than a, I've, I've worked in other middle schools too and that's not something that's usually, it just doesn't fit with the middle school model.
Unless you said before school, like you said, it opens at seven or after school.
Right, right. Yeah, within, yeah, within the school day, we're not going to be able to have that staffed. Um, and then have stu, there, there wouldn't be enough students making use of it for that to be, um, to make sense. So we, we have more targeted interventions where they're assigned to the class.
And the one place, you know, Jen, to get back to that in terms of what the students' perspective is versus ours, we also use it for assessment makeups. So if a student is absent on the day of a test. When I went to school, the next day you came in, you had to sit out in the hall by yourself, miss the next lesson. And take, but now students during their study hall or again before or after school can go there and take a test in that room. So that could be some of that as well.
Yeah, because I do think that the math lab will be an interesting one because I do think in theory it's a great idea.
It's used a lot, so like, it's clearly disconnected somewhere.
Yeah, with the kids. And then the last thing I had was.
Jen, before we get to the next question, just one follow-up on that. Do you think in the, what's our next term, fall, it might be useful, could we, or maybe you can look back at the data since it's by name and see if we can identify the, the number of individual students as opposed to a total number? So if someone's coming, you know, ten times a quarter versus you have ten different students, to get that twelve hundred number to a more specific number, just to compare that. Sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Um, then my last thing was just about the, 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 a ma, a general math statement slash question was the, the last row, the second one where it says, I go to my teacher for extra help. To me, that's a sort of, it's sort of completely contrary to I feel positive relationship with my, with my teacher. Because you feel positive, or don't.
It says not my current teacher. That's, that's students going to someone else.
It does not say that on my sheet. It says I go to my teacher for extra help.
That's in the bottom row.
Yeah.
Second question.
The second question, I'm so sorry, I was reading the wrong one. Yep.
And so I just worry that, you know, they have this great relationship, do they? But they won't go to extra help for their teacher, it's not that concerned.
But also, you know, some of that may be, and again, I don't know, but you're right, you know, something to look into. Um, I don't need extra help. Like, it's, you know, if we have, you know, our PC one, our pre-calculus honors class is a hundred percent A's and, I'm sorry. Um, with the exception of, I think, three students, they're all A's and Bs. So maybe they don't go for extra help and they don't feel the need to because they're, they're doing just fine. So I don't, I don't know the answer.
I would, I, I've had AP and those Level Two kids and I don't think, I think the Level Two kids probably do need more help than the AP kids probably in general, right? And so that was where.
Yeah, so I, I could also look at that by course because I have that data. Yeah, so I, I could also look at that by course, because I have that data, because I asked them what, what course you're currently in, so I could, I could disaggregate that by, by course.
Because a lot of those, like the student teaching idea, this is where I feel like it's so different from elementary, because I know elementary seems to be going more to that group, sort of class, work together kind of thing. I feel like it's amazing to watch, but on the high school level, not for a kid to go, a Level Two kid to go and say, you know what, I don't understand this Tara, when I don't know Tara, and not go to be able to go.
You'd call me Mrs. Willerup.
I would. And I just wonder how effective that is.
Yeah, I also think to one of Matt's points, we have to look at that classroom instruction a little bit deeper, and how are we differentiating? How are we setting up opportunities so it isn't awkward, right? That it's, so that's potentially one of the outcomes of these survey results.
Yeah.
Well, and to that, to that point though, is the one.
Level Two is very different.
Is the question in front of it too. My teacher gives helpful feedback after an assessment, so I know how to improve. That's a fifty-fifty answer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's, I think, to the point too.
Yeah.
And it's, and it always comes in math, that you've got the kids who celebrate math and are very, very good, and the kids who struggle, and the kids who struggle, I just feel really that your, your jobs and your mission should be to make sure those are the students that really learn to like math, so that they can grow up and use it, you know? Whereas the AP kids really, I'm not as worried about them because they know what they're doing and they really, they have a passion for it. And, and so I think a lot of times when I see some of these, that, that's my concern. And when my daughter was there, I wanted her test to come home, because I know I learned more from mistakes that I made than answers that I got correct. If I got it correct, I would never look at it again. But if I got it wrong and I had the test in front of me, I could bring it home to my folks and say, hey, okay, what did I do? And they could help me, and then I could go see my teacher, at least after talking to my parents, I'd have a little more confidence, so I could probably go to my teacher. So if you have the test, but the fact that they never let her bring tests home was extremely frustrating for me as a parent and my student as a student. Oh, and my other students nodding.
Yeah.
It's a very, very, that is a, that's one of my biggest concerns of the math department. I don't understand why tests can't go home for kids who need them to go home. That's, and that's just, that's not even about today, that's just something that I would like to be on the table as having been said.
And I think a real positive here is the steps, you know, to your point, good data, we can really take a look at the source of where it came from, right to classroom, and in the spirit of continuous improvement, right, what does that rollout look like next year to get more con-, you know, get that loop going, more concrete, and then come back with, you know?
Yeah.
What, what that looks like in terms of.
Yeah, and I think to that point, Matt.
Moving the ball down the field, right?
And this discussion on the high school, right, I haven't lived the high school experience, I am living the middle school. I just, it kind of just backed to my, I think we need this for middle school. Like, the more we talk here, everything, like, we need the metrics, we need the survey, because like you said, this is great data, and then you can build a plan, do focus groups. Middle school, it's kind of like theoretical a little bit right now to say, right, like it's like.
And the questions might be different, but you can still get the point.
Right, questions can be different, but it's kind of like what certain, like administration and teachers may be thinking, but you want to hear from the families, you want to hear from the students, because is that what they're seeing and feeling as well? You take that survey data, you take metrics data, you see what's working, what's not working. Right now, we've got a plan, but I think we need numbers, because this, high school says, again, I don't have, I haven't had a high schooler, but I can look at this and get a feel for what's working and what could need improvement without even.
And to that point, this is a very, very comprehensive survey. We have been through a lot of surveys where the questions don't always get to things to talk about. So I appreciate the surveys that we can, do have things to talk about. So thank you.
And now we can make a plan to move forward.
Keep going forward.
Yeah.
Loving it.
So just on the assessment piece, so the question you know is, my teacher gives helpful feedback after the assessment, so I know how to improve. If you're going to do this kind of survey going forward, I think it would be helpful to expand that question a little bit or add another question or two about what types of feedback, because to Tara and Jen, and I think everyone here who has a high school or had a high schooler, not getting the test back makes it virtually impossible for the students to actually figure out what they got wrong, and since math builds, to bring that forward to the next part. And sitting in class and going over a couple of questions, which I think is at least my lived, my students' lived experience, they'll go over a couple of questions that some people generally had problems with, but not really let each student individually take a look at how they have issues and what they can improve on and learn from. So if that question can be expanded into like exactly what the feedback is and make it more harmonized and consistent, I think that would be helpful.
I have a question. On this, to end this closing statement, on the last, the bottom grid over here, on this last one, I go, and maybe you can circle back because to the second one, I go to my teacher for extra help, and then move forward to one, two, three, four, the fifth, the fifth column out, I go to a specific teacher, not my current teacher for extra help. What does that mean?
So looking at, you know, I, I have students, so I have an office next to the MATLAB. I have students that come into my office all the time. I don't currently teach them, but I've had them in the past and they come in, some students who have never taught, you know, have come in for extra help. So like, and that's what it is. So like, I built a relationship with this teacher last year, I don't know this teacher yet, I'm going in, I'm comfortable with that teacher, and all of our teachers are open to that. So, you know, whether I'm helping a student that's in Mrs. O'Donnell's class or she's helping a student that's in someone else's class, for us, we're just happy they're coming in and asking a question. So sometimes they just happen to be more comfortable with one teacher or another, fantastic. As long as you're getting help, I'm happy.
I got to chime in and say, it's also very exciting because I did have one child who loved Mr. Milchison, but he does have, or he did have granola bars, I believe, or some ice inside there that were very enticing.
Whatever it takes to sleep.
I probably owe you a lot of the bars.
But he had pizza at it after school.
See, again.
Great. Well, thank you guys very much, really appreciate it.
Very thorough. Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Policy, yeah.
This could be very quick, Mr. Tyndall.[1623.32]